I still need today. Set the recorder. But then Mr. Chase, your schedule could be recorded. I had to record like six hours. She answered.
Is it that? Redo for today?
Yeah.
Okay, it's 4:30. We'll start off with the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, where there is justice for all. All right, welcome to our meeting. Nice to have you. Great. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the July 3, 2023 meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Questions regarding minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approval of the June 2023 trajectory report.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Questions on the trajectory report? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Then amendments, yes, any correspondence on the whole bit and new bit and land development? Yeah, who's?
I'll take the sidewalk.
Yeah.
So the first thing we have for here tonight is the sidewalk bond release for 8800 Marley Way. We took a look at it on July 13th. There is no significant divisions found, so I would recommend releasing the sidewalk bond.
I'll make that motion to approve the sidewalk bond release.
I'll second it.
Questions about the bond? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, the second one we have is for 8839 Marley Way. Same thing, we reviewed it on July 13, 2023. No significant divisions were found, and I would recommend releasing the sidewalk bond.
Which one's that? 8839? Is that all the way up top?
I believe it is, yes. I said, Joe, I will look at these, so.
Okay. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Questions about the bond release? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And is this Tammy?
Yep. This is the First Assembly of God, 8150 Oliver Road, parcel ID number 401773, 2.03, 4.7, and 18. I received this plan on June 26th. Went through the planning commission on July 10th, and they recommended approval. And they went through the Erie County Committee on July 13th, and they recommended approval. We do have us here. Welcome here. Okay.
Jim, while I represent First Assembly of God Church, this plan, first of all, combines all those orphaned tax parcels together. They were all kind of noncompliant. And then, secondly, further subdivides it into lots A, B, and C. Lot A, the intention is to convey that to Robert's Trucking, which is next door. That's going to give them room to do some expansion and to bring a truck lane out to Oliver Road and give them better movement all the way around their facility. Lot B, they're contemplating selling that maybe in the future. There's a little driveway easement note there because both lot C and lot B share that portion of the driveway. And the reason lot B has that funny curvature on the east side is because it follows an existing swell that delivers the stormwater management to the existing stormwater management pond, which is way down at I-90 there. So it was a logical place to create that separation. That's it in a nutshell. I'm glad to answer any questions if I can.
Thank you. Great, can I get a?
Tammy, got anything to include?
No, thank you.
Oh, good.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you, Tammy. You got a motion to approve or deny the plan?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Questions regarding subdivision? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item we have is a subdivision dedication plan for Lepinino Pastro, Glory Drive, parcel ID number 40167240 and 43.49, some residential median density. I received this plan on June 6th and went through the planning commission on July 10th. They did recommend approval from the Erie County Committee on July 11th. This plan includes a dedication, so this is, I'm going to have that.
Yeah, so right now, we're looking at the existing conditions. So right now, we have the Pastro property here, this five lot, and then Glory Drive dead ends and Summit Township owns lot 12 here. So this is the subdivision. We're going to, the Pastros will retain the residue along the Norman Road frontage. A portion will be combined on the lot 12, the Summit Township lot, which will make this a viable building lot for the zoning ordinance. There will be a dedication of right-of-way between our lot 12 and the new lot A, which is an eight acre parcel that will be subdivided off and sold. So you can kind of see where the old line used to be. Moving to the next age, we've got to blow here. So a portion will be dedicated by Summit Township and a portion will be dedicated by the Pastro subdivided parcel A. There will be a snow stalk pile easement granted to the township on the township's parcel. And then you can kind of see with the dotted lines, the building envelopes that will remain after the subdivision. No roads will be constructed. The right-of-way is going to encompass the existing turnaround that Summit Township has already created there. And it'll give us ample room that someday in the future, if we so decide to put in the full-size cul-de-sac, if needed, we have the room to do so. Any questions or concerns?
Thanks. Thanks, Matt.
Right.
You got a motion to approve or deny this plan?
I'll make a motion to approve the subdivision plan.
I'll second that.
Questions regarding this?
What is there to add? The turnaround or the cul-de-sac are not right?
Currently, we purchased that lot 12, and the turnaround is partially on that lot.
So it's just like we have on East Drive, you turn it and back out?
No, it's an actual vault that's put in there. It's just a little smaller than our standard one, but it's large enough that we can turn a truck in and get the buses turned around in there. This will encompass that whole area that's already paved, but give us further room if in the future we want to make the vault bigger.
Make it round. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thanks. Motion to direct zoning administrator, Tamer Kass, to approve or deny temporary certificate of occupancy for Erie Sports Park.
Two.
One.
Yeah, so. I don't know, Gary, if you guys have gotten the email from BIU?
It's just came through.
That just came through an hour ago. So at 3:12, Summit Township, I received, we had just received a letter from BIU, and I haven't even had a chance to print it yet. But it says provisions for temporary use of the dome and structure at ERSports, ESC Ersports Park. And yeah, Tammy's got a copy. She can give you that. It says that prior to BIU issuing a temporary certificate of occupancy, they would require six things. They would request an approved engineer from ASATI to fully inspect the dome, including the emergency backup systems and all the egress components. Would require a stamped, sealed letter approving the dome design, its meaning current building code, and approval of construction. Number two, the final plans for structure would include in sprinkler link, a sprinkler ring. Due to the change in occupancy, because this is not currently in place, fire watch would need to be in place when the building is occupied. Three, the structure will require fire apparatus access as approved by the fire department. Four, a maximum occupancy load of 330 for the dome, which will need to be posted and adhered to. Five, all egress doors, the exterior exit discharge components must meet the current building code, including egress illumination. Six, a code compliant fire alarm system must be in place, including approved off-site monitoring. They said with the above minimum requirements in place, inspected and approved, BIU would then permit a temporary certificate of occupancy of this structure for a maximum of 60 days. This would allow the use of the structure while awaiting the final plans, which may be received for the 60-day limit. So we were under the impression, it's one of your saying, you're under the impression we were going to be receiving a temporary certificate of occupancy. However, we receive conditions which must be complied with prior to the issuance of a temporary certificate of occupancy. What Summit Township does is Summit Township, under the zoning ordinance, Summit Township can issue a certificate of occupancy for use, indicating that the building is being used in a zoning compliant fashion. But we cannot issue that until we receive the temporary occupancy, the certificate of occupancy, temporary or otherwise, from the code inspector first. So we had put that motion on the agenda anticipating that. However, that's not what was received. What was received was the conditions precedent, which must be complied with prior to receipt of the temporary certificate of occupancy. So it's my recommendation that the supervisors consider tabling of the motion until a certificate of occupancy, temporary or otherwise, is received.
And we discussed this at 3:12 PM today ourselves. I mean, this is all brand new. So speaking with Tim Walker regarding this, he will probably have to do what he just told us, otherwise we don't have anywhere to go from here until BIU's happy.
And our certificate of occupancy is only relevant to use. It's not relevant to occupancy for building code purposes. So our, even if we did issue a temporary use certificate or occupancy use certificate, as we call it in our zoning code, it would not provide the authorization to utilize the building for UCC purposes.
Did he not send this to you?
Well.
Yeah, probably.
Sure, sure.
I was curious who was in on it.
Definitely Gary Matzak. Gary Matzak Architects, 4509 West Ridge Road.
Thank you.
I was in transit for my office coming here when it may have arrived. Honestly, I didn't check my email when I came and sat down. I would like to make the point that the building, the structure, has a certificate of occupancy granted by the Department of Labor and Industry dating back to 2001. The way the building is currently used today is not any materially different than it was when originally constructed 22 years ago. Now, we have, I find, the owner has a potential tenant coming forward that is a E-business use. When the building was originally built, it had E-business use mixed with the assembly occupancy. The matter before us comes to light simply because, two factors. The air-supported structure is a fabric structure, and it is essentially, as you know, it's a bubble, and it's all a roof. And just like on this building, every 20, 25 years, you replace the roof or you patch it or you do whatever you need. Particular structure on site suffered a hemorrhage in a storm due to weight of snow load. And we replaced the fabric, just as if, as a normal course of action, the rest of the places, as it was constructed. And the difference becomes an issue with building inspection underwriters looking at today's code and trying and wanting to apply them to the proposed set of plans for helping any help network to come into the facility. And we're more than willing to work through those issues with them, and we believe we have it down to one or two issues left from an open discussion that was much appreciated by many of the folks present today. But what I'm trying to say is, through the course of applying for a permit for a proposed tenant, somehow the structure was deemed to be condemned and not usable, and the state's occupancy certificate with which we hold and is legal has been rescinded. Now, I'm not aware of building inspection underwriters as a third-party agency's ability to rescind a certificate with which we're in no violation of at present. There's no change of use. It's been used in the same manner for the last 22 years. And as we come forward for a building permit for Mr. Biggs' tenant, a few weeks later, a sticker is put on the dome that it's condemned. I understand that we have issues to work through, and we are working through them. And if anybody was present last Thursday that was here, that's here on the panel today, they know that we're diligently pursuing these matters. But I personally just don't understand how building inspection underwriters has the ability and/or the authority to rescind a legal occupancy certificate issued by the Department of Labor and Industry, and there's no material differences or changes in the way the building is being used right now as we are sitting, as we are assembled in this space versus when it was first constructed 22 years ago. We want to work with building inspection underwriters to get through the issues that are left on the table. We believe we've cleared the majority of them, four out of six, through discussions and acquiescence. But I stand before you today sort of very surprised that they have the authority to rescind an occupancy certificate granted by the state for what reasons I don't understand and have not been enumerated, except as they are contrasted against the current set of plans for a proposed tenant, that nothing has happened. Nobody's raised a hammer. There's no demolition that has started. We don't have a permit. But we do have a legal occupancy certificate, in my mind, and I honestly don't understand how it is they have the power to rescind it and condemn the facility. I would welcome any questions in that regard from everyone.
So it's my understanding, and very good questions, thank you. And I know that the supervisors feel your frustration. So that question, whether that was appropriate or whether you should be permitted to move forward with the current certificate of occupancy, whether you should be permitted to move forward under the current permit obligations, is one that can be answered by the UCC Building Board of Appeals, UCC Building Code Board of Appeals. And I believe that we had sent out an application and information regarding how to make that, you know, application.
I'm familiar with the process.
I know you are. You've been doing this for a while. And so the way it works, for those who aren't so familiar with the process, is that the township hired BIU to be the state-certified building code inspector. They operate and manage the building code process for the township. Supervisors have no legal authority to overrule them in the decisions that they make as the state-certified building code officers. So the building code Board of Appeals, UCC Building Code Board of Appeals, was put into place so that there was somebody, you know, code officials who know what they're doing, understand how these things work, architects, design folks, et cetera. So you just don't get somebody like me sitting here trying to jerk the building code, which Lord knows you don't want to have to happen, to review these items and determine whether they believe that the building code official is appropriate in their determination or not. And I think that is where we need to go to get the question answered regarding the certificate of occupancy and regarding the permit issues. And I think while the supervisors may sympathize with your frustrations and your concerns regarding that, we don't have the ability to overrule them or give them, give you the relief that you're looking for.
I understand your comments. And with all due respect, I must point out to this board that there has been no written reason, nothing put in writing, why the current occupancy certificate has been rescinded. And I got to tell you, the whatever makings 22 years ago, or the subsequent two occupancy certificates and inspections that occurred, the most recent in 2014, under the current code, under the current system, not the Fire and Panico, but since 2004. My client is two owners later, and he's being harmed by not being able to use his facility. And I just go back to the simple point, people. There has been no legal written reason given to my client why the current occupancy certificate has been rescinded. I think he's being unfairly treated. He's now a month without the use of his building, going on five weeks. And that's 8% of a year. So he's lost 8% of revenue from not being able to use his facility. And now you're asking him to wait another 60 days to get on the docket, to legally advertise, to go in front of the appeals board, to ask the question why it has been rescinded. I think that's materially unfair. And I don't, as an architect, my engineers here on the team, we do understand the process. I serve on the Tri-City Appeals Board of Fairview, Harbor Creek, and Low Creek Townships. I administer the process. I understand it. I've been doing it since 2004. I've got almost 20 years on that board. I come to you with 40 years of experience in this field, plus 20 years of experience almost on serving on the appeals board and administering the process. And I again state for the record, there has been no material reason given to my client why the current occupancy certificate has been rescinded. And I say that simply because there has been no change in the way the building has been used, certainly since the last occupancy certificate granted in 2014, and all the way back to the day it was constructed back in 2000.
I think at this point, you know, this is the first I've heard that question. It's a good question, and I think that we will request that BIU issue that correspondence to you.
That, I greatly appreciate that attorney logic, because simply in order for us to challenge them on their logic, we need to know what it is. I mean, you have to understand my frustration. You're just trying to search for the right words, because this man can't use his facility for reasons that none of us understand. And it's unfair.
I don't have this certificate of occupancy in front of me, but I think it was Glory Dome only, not for the other four sets. He was talking about your A4s and whatever.
Right. So they, when the building was built, that's what it was titled.
Right.
And from the time it was built, it's been used for a multitude of activities that everybody here that lives in the township knows very well. I don't argue the point of what the title says on the drawings.
Right.
But when they built it, yeah, they had a golf pro there who had a pro shop, which was a retail store. That's E-business. That's the same thing as what's going in there with AHM. Even if they allowed that permit to be issued, in my mind, it's the same set of uses. And I don't, I don't argue your point. However, there has nothing that's materially changed, absolutely nothing, in 22 years.
I mean, unless the supervisors have something else to answer or ask, I think the best we can offer is we'll ask the questions.
If you would please, because that's the only way we can move forward. How can we go litigate a matter in front of the board? We don't know what we're, what we're.
Well, I mean, I can say securely, I'm parts and wreck and system. I don't get involved a lot, but I stay in a loop. And I do know that the dome went up without a permit. I know that part. And the most recent dome was constructed without any kind of a permit, and I was under the impression that I needed to have one. And how long have this, has this been going on?
Well, I issued the zoning permit in July of 2022, and then you've been working on it since BIU since July of 2022, I believe.
Sure. And for a commercial building, just like any commercial building, the contractor would come in and get a permit to replace the roof, because we replaced the roof. That's what we did. There is a different anchoring system. All of those engineered documents were submitted to BIU last fall or August. We received their plan review comments on looking for verification of anchorage, how they drill, the kind of epoxies, all of that technical stuff. It's all contained in the set of plans that will be submitted. There are pages of notes laid up on sheets over all of the documents, and it's all there. I know that Mr. Zach from CT replied to all four of the items that were listed on their letter. They have all of that information on what they, what was next for them. We're not aware. I mean, we went, we went to get a permit to do it. We got their comments. We addressed their comments. And with that, we put the bubble up, did the new anchoring, gave them details on the existing foundation walls and how we interfaced with the new fabric structure and anchoring. I don't know what else they'd like. I'll be very honest with the board. I've come to be involved in this project in the last five, six weeks simply because I have extensive experience in fabric structures. I was the architect along with the urban engineers team for the one at Edinburgh University. And not only a part of the design team, but also my daughter attended Teal College, and they put up and take down the dome every fall after football season over their football field. I actually helped drag it out one year while she was attending. Tie it down, blow it up. I'm very familiar with these structures, and all I want to do is help my client get through this process. And that's when I've come on board, was at the point where the facility was condemned for use and the occupancy certificate rescinded.
All right, well, we'll have to find out what it is anymore.
So would it be appropriate to summarize your question being, why was the certificate of occupancy rescinded at Erie Sports Park? And all that was done was the replacement of the fabric, much like a roof being replaced?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that being said in a nutshell, we really, we're stuck at this point. Mr. Walker, I would say, so we probably should table it.
Right.
Until we get some information from BIU.
We're unable to issue a zoning certificate until we receive the final certificate of occupancy from the building code inspector. And quite frankly, even if we were, it wouldn't give them the relief that they're hoping for, because they need that certificate of occupancy from the building inspector to be able to use.
Right, right, right. Okay.
So I do suggest a tabling until it's time to. So I do suggest a tabling until such type of that is provided to us.
Okay. Well, we're gonna march into table this until?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I have a question. What, what the next township supervisors meeting?
Thank you.
Call it in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Okay. Yeah, we'll find out what's going on with that deal. Other? What, Mr. Solister, do you have any other?
I've said more than my quote.
All right. Mr. Jones?
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right.
I'm sorry.
Hold on, man.
My apologies. As you're aware, there is a number of property owners that had filed suit against the township in what has been known as a Ponderosa Drive lawsuit against the township relative to the short-term rental ordinance in which they were claiming that the short-term rental ordinance was, would not permit the issuance of short-term rental licenses to people that had previously operated a short-term rental prior to the adoption of the ordinance by the township. Hearing, an argument was held before Judge Puccinelli on preliminary objections that we had filed on behalf of the township. On March 6th, the judge issued a decision on June 27th in which he granted the preliminary objections that we had filed, agreed that the ordinance does not give a strict deadline upon which existing short-term rentals were to apply for licensure, and indicated that the way that they had filed a request for relief, which is known as a mandamus, was not an appropriate remedy. And the judge went a step further to say that because there is no likelihood of the plaintiffs prevailing under any theory, the court did not grant leave to the plaintiffs to amend their complaint to move forward with new theories against the township. So while there is a 30-day period in which to file an appeal to the Commonwealth Court, at this point, the new appeals were filed that we're aware of and in a few weeks, we should be able to consider this matter fully closed. So the township was successful. The short-term rental ordinance continues to stand as written and the actions of the code officials in Zobin Office and Tammy were deemed to be appropriate.
Great, thank you.
Glad I didn't miss that update.
Yeah, me too. I'm glad it worked out because that's our intention all along. It worked out good. Thank you. Is that it, Alia?
I, I mean it this time.
All right, whatever. Mr. Jones?
So there's been some confusion regarding the maintenance at the roundabout regarding vegetation control and the stormwater management. So I reviewed the agreement and sent an email to PennDOT this morning just to clarify our position, which was that there was no mention of the stormwater management system maintenance within the agreement. And there's a mention of associated drainage within the landscape maintenance portion of the agreement, but it's in the context of a sentence that it would be more aligned with the runoff from the landscape areas, not from the whole intersection as a whole. And then under section 1.1 D at the beginning, it said all landscaping associated with the roundabout to the extent it has been reviewed and approved by the municipality. Municipality never reviewed the stormwater management plan because from the get-go, it was stated it was in PennDOT right-of-way and we had no jurisdiction over what they did within their right-of-way regarding stormwater. So the only thing landscaping-wise that we reviewed and approved was the, the center island landscaping. So with that, I did get a response back from PennDOT with them agreeing with our stance on it. And basically they said PennDOT will maintain the vegetated swales and stormwater ponds. Township will maintain the center island and mowing around the sidewalks. So that's kind of where we stand and running in the record, we have a copy of the email. We'll put it in the file that way. If we forget in the future, we can go look it up again.
Thanks. That's it. After looking at this morning, that's what I was hoping for, no more than that. Those swales are pretty steep.
Yes. And, and typically with vegetated swales, there's a certain mowing schedule that you have to follow. You can't just go and keep it at a turf grass level. It actually has to have the higher weeds in it.
Right.
And you typically only mow maybe twice a year. And I don't think we need to take on any more stormwater detention basis, especially that far from our resources.
Right, right. Very good.
So that's all I have for today.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Lee?
Not much with that many people left, but I will say this, this, this business at this sports park's been going on for a long time and now they seem to want to turn it around and blame it on BIU and someone township. That ain't the case. If something goes wrong over there, we're the ones that are going to be answering the news media. So I just wanted to pass that on.
Yeah, thank you.
I got a couple of messages this weekend. What's wrong with you people? You know?
Nothing. We know what we're doing.
And we're not certified state building inspectors and whatever they're doing is state code, you know? That's state law.
Yeah. That's why I had to bring that up that I think it's better here. And I don't think that's.
One other thing, I believe that dome's collapsed twice in the last six years since the, the other people took it over and then, and then one more time for this group. So it's not bulletproof and we do live, you know, along the Great Lakes. Thanks.
Yeah, no, thank you. Mr. Walker?
We're gonna start paving with any luck tomorrow weather pending. Paul with Dundee Glenco. Once we're finished there, we'll be moving over to Hammond Road by the following week anyways. And we have about a mile roadway to pave there. The traffic signals were programmed today. Two of our technicians and path masters were down there. Everything's up and running according to Plan A. Be interested to see how those new campus systems work out because they're pretty incredible. So hopefully everything works out like we have it planned. That's about it.
Cool. Thank you, Mark. Thank you. Not much. I was mowing grass and keeping things out of control. The disc golf course in the woods is just about complete. Nine holes were completed a couple of weeks ago and decided to add nine more holes. But the nine more holes are simply nine different areas to throw the frisbee from. No more of the catching devices were purchased, just a different angle at the same piece of equipment. So that was a pretty cool idea. And Kiwanis Club has been in contact with myself and they are going to make monetary information toward the expense security, which it wasn't, wasn't a ton in the first place. We had a budgeted amount to work with and we stayed under that even. So then I went, well, people like it. I guess several hundred people played there in the last month and pretty weird. I never see them there. I don't know when they go, if they're there. People are using the pickleball court. A couple of people that are dedicated to using it quite frequently. A summer program about to wrap up. What's, what do I have? One more week here, June, June 1st? But that actually went off pretty well considering the time we had to throw it together. Residents Weekend's coming up, July 29th, I think. Yeah, July 29th. And then Senior Picnic, August 10th. That's about it. How about either one of you fellows? Yeah, what?
There was a question at some meeting in the past about a bandstand down at the dome that wasn't, that wasn't, did a building permit like?
The stage?
Yeah, the stage.
Yeah, same, same deal.
Same deal.
No permit.
Okay.
And that fellow mentioned.
I don't think it's being used.
Well, no, they got a temporary one to use, I guess, in place of that one until they get it together. But no. Oh, that architect alluded that they had submitted everything to BIU last fall. I don't think that is the case, is it? Do you know? Tim?
I think they might have, but then they didn't touch base with them until January or then April. It was never consistent.
Yeah, they've been, they've been told, told, told. They just, eh, whatever. Okay. Do you have anything else? Jim?
The stage wasn't used last weekend at that bike rally. I didn't think so. The commercials looked like it was a tractor trailer or a trailer of some sort that the van was on. I was going to ask about that too because I saw Jack have been doing this probably in June, that they did not have permits and they actually didn't want to be on the boat, which you're exactly right. This guy wants to skirt the system. They've built that dome shouldn't be here. I understand it should not be built here. Edinburgh, I can't believe it's never collapsed, but they have a lot stronger buildings. They got log chambers, they got double doors and it's a red tunnel walking in between those things. Jack, you're ready? It's fallen down twice in the last six years. I don't think they should be allowed to put it back up because someone's gonna get killed in there. Someone is gonna get killed in there.
Somebody?
You guys are gonna get blamed. It's not your fault, but the government will always get blamed when a building falls down. Why wasn't it constructed correct?
Was there a loss of heat inside the building both times? I know once, I think it wasn't heated or whatever, and then the snow load build up on it, which doesn't make it better.
Like you said, Jack, you don't build out on the Great Lakes when you get 100 inches of snow.
I remember about six years ago on Christmas Eve, we had 5 foot of snow and everything shut down.
I lived in a mail in 1980 and they had one for a tennis court and it collapsed every year and the people were not smart enough. I can't believe that insurance company who paid to put a new roof on it, insurance company or this guy in his pocket? He paid out his pocket, it's foolish. If the insurance company paid, they're foolish for insuring it because it's gonna fall down again.
Yeah, something else. That's why BIU has to be involved and if they deem it safe, then that's on them. I don't know. You got anything else?
One other thing. Yesterday, I don't know why I noticed it or it stood out. I'm sure you drive past it at a day. At the bottom of Lee Road Hill there where stars, big trucks are, when they're turning their trucks, pulling their driveway or back out, they're driving it. Really turning black. It must be tearing the stones up. I just noticed it yesterday. I mean, I've gone past it, I don't know, every week since you guys started chipping to go play golf. But yesterday, wow, look at the black marks on their tires. Whether the stones aren't staying adhered to the oiling or what, but I just noticed it. So I don't know if there's a problem or maybe it just was the light. I don't know. But it looked really pronounced.
Yeah, turning on that stuff really does tear it. I know. You know, we looked at turn chipping down on Little Peach Street on some of the side streets and because of the, the people turning on it, it does tear it.
Is that different tar chipping than we?
Same, same thing. No, same thing.
Because I, I just, like you said, I mean, even in front of my house, my pickup truck when I vacuum in, I can see it's doing it, but not as pronounced because the truck's not as big and the tires aren't as big. But like I said, I, but I'd let you know, Mark.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Thank you, Jim. Anybody else have anything else? I want to motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
All right.